It's six thirty, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. The January thirty first, twenty twenty-two meeting to order for the town of Olytic. I'm gonna start off with the minutes approval. We have several minutes for several meetings that we've had this past month. I'd like to make a motion to approve the December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one monthly meeting held at six thirty P. M. Are there any corrections or changes on that?
I do have a correction. On page three, item number twenty-seven and twenty-eight, where I abstained from voting, not obtained.
I'm just making sure you're awake.
I understand. And that's all I have.
Okay, so. We're going to make a motion to approve those corrections.
Oh.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and approve those corrections. And for the special meeting called on January sixth, twenty twenty-two, at two P. M., the squaring in of two part-time deputies, are there any corrections or changes? No corrections or changes, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So those stand approved? We'll, we'll cover that. Special meeting called on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, at six P. M. Stormwater project update, minutes published by Drew from Commonwealth Engineering. Are there any corrections or changes to those minutes?
Is that January seventeenth or seventh?
Actually, I think it was the...
I think it's the seventh.
I've got sev- okay.
Seventeen. According to his minutes.
Not on kickoff agenda, he's got the seventh.
January... Do you have the physical minute, minutes he sent, which has the updates in red bold italic? There's two of them. He did the kickoff meeting, the agenda for the engineering project, and then he actually did...
Oh, that's, okay, I've got the improvement, sorry. Okay. Yeah, that was on the, that was on the seventh, okay.
It's the purpose meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any corrections or changes to that? If not, do I have a motion to accept and approve as written?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Opposed? Okay, special meeting called on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, at six P. M. The kickoff of the engineering report project for water and wastewater utility minutes published by Drew from Commonwealth Engineering. Are there any corrections or changes? None, do I have a motion to accept and approve as written?
I'll second that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? For the special meeting called on January twentieth, twenty twenty-two, at four P. M. Of the Olytic Stormwater Commission to approve and adopt a resolution for the construction and management of the stormwater project. Are there any corrections or changes? If not, do I have a motion to accept and approve as written?
I will do.
Okay, John, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that takes care of the minutes from the previous meetings. Under old business, John, would you like to give an update on the old school building?
Sure.
What's happening?
Okay. I've got some tentatively good news. The, the North School is tentatively sold. So Jim Deckard, who owns Deckard Heating Cooling, he owns eleven or twelve rental properties here in Olytic. He's in Bedford. He intends to rehab the place, which is, you know, John's been in it and I've been in it. It's a, it's gonna be quite the job, it's gonna have to be, they're gonna have to go in and tarp off and, and there's so many bird droppings and all kinds of animals and asbestos and just different stuff that they're gonna have to get out of the place before they can even start working on it. So Tim Stark out of Indianapolis has made a deal with John, or Jim Deckard. And so right now, you know, little girl, it may take a chance to, of getting it fixed. He intends to hopefully put his, he's got a home health company and he's wanting to put the offices in there, some apartments and some other things. John Brogdon and I have worked really, really hard to try to work deals on this building. I've been here for two years, John's been here almost a year, but both of I've teamed up to get some projects done here in Olytic. So hopefully this thing goes through. Jim said he'd be at the next meeting, hopefully to, to give a report, his thoughts. So, anything else you want to add to that?
We're fortunate, it's somebody local. And Jim's construction company, he is EPA, IDIM certified to go in and remove all of the bird droppings and whatever he finds, which is also a plus, right? Because he can absorb that cost within the company that he's got. So very, very fortunate.
Yes, yeah.
To, to have Jim step up, just cross your fingers and hope everything closes.
Every, it's on the title work right now and so hopefully, maybe next month, we'll have some really, really good news for you as far as that building. I know there's a lot of folks here. I never, I, I went to B and L and, and the old high school in Bedford, across from Hardee's. And so I never had the pleasure of, I'm, I'm an Olytic part... No, everybody thinks they did. So I never had a, a chance to step foot in that building until the other day that we went in. And I'm like, oh my God, I mean, it, it really is a mess. So the guy's got a construction company, God bless him for doing this. And in a little bit, I got something to say about something else, but any, you want to do any questions on the school? I think it's about it, that's about all I can give you.
Well, I'd make one more comment. He's also interested, as a couple of other people are interested, he is also perhaps interested in Mayby Hensley's building, the one he's got for his weather insulation. He's also interested in the empty lot that Freddie Lewis owns and the old Smallwood House. So now where all that stands, we don't know yet, we'll, we'll get more updates from Jimmy. But he, like the others, very interested in acquiring the whole piece of property, including Freddie Lewis's.
The one with Hensley's?
The old gymnasium.
All right, oh, no.
The old...
No, the one you said that he was wanting to sell.
Hensley?
Yeah.
Possibly. Possibly.
The old, the old...
Weather mask.
Well, the old weather mask, where the lawn...
No.
No, the new one. Right next to the old school.
Okay.
The south, south, what I call the south school building.
He's wanting to sell that one, right?
He's ready to retire and thinking it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Was there anything ever decided as far as its historical preservation or anything?
Uh, I mean, the only thing I know is that, that's a possibility because he's gonna, he said he's gonna seek grants. So right now, the town is gonna just, I mean, it's, town really has nothing to do with it now. It's, it's between Mr. Deckard and Tim Stark. And so we're gonna let them do their things and we'll see how it washes out and then hopefully, you know, we can all play a part. Hopefully get, he said he wants to keep it looking, you know, like it did years ago when, on the outside and, and refresh it, windows, you know, vents, all the outside refurbished, tucked and pointed, of course, all the inside has to be rehabbed and, and get a roof on it. So anyway, that's, that's the good news about that, so.
And once it closes, I had started the paperwork to register it with the National Historic Registry, which would open up a lot of channels for grants and money. I've stopped that, of course. As, after it closes, I'll turn that information over to Jimmy, as well as the S I D C out of Lagodee. They also have a grant program to go in and perhaps move, remove old oil tanks that were used for heating. That's still, I kind of put that on hold as well. Again, until Jimmy closes and gets everything done, I was gonna do the historic registry and I was also gonna take care of the S I D C oil tanks, right? Well, with Jimmy now taking over, we'll tick and tile all the paperwork, give it over to Jimmy. If we can help, we will, but it basically will end up with Jimmy taking care of it.
Any other old business?
Good deal.
I think that's a good, good certain town.
Yes, it is.
Okay, under new business, we have a document titled "The Acceptance and Creation of an Authorization Instrument." This document starts the process for the town's loan of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to cover the match portion of the flood plan loan for the six hundred thousand dollar grant. The document consists of several exhibits, certificates of authentication, the creation of an Olytic Stormwater Management Board that consists of three members, Brenda Coria as president, John Brogdon as secretary, and board member Steve Kerr. The management board is a special, in a special meeting on January twentieth, accepted, passed, and approved a depository resolution. Resolution one, twenty twenty, which briefly approves the stormwater improvements for the stormwater project of Area Ten, Hall and Mathis, and Area Twelve, Sixth and Oak Street. There is a public hearing scheduled for February ninth at five P. M. at the Olytic Town Hall concerning the loan bonds to pay for the match of the grant, at which time a confirmatory resolution will be presented indicating the project construction will proceed. Tonight, the board's going to be presenting two new ordinances in relation to the stormwater project. Motion, I'm gonna make a motion for ordinance one, twenty twenty-two, an ordinance of the Olytic Town Council authorizing the construction of certain additions, extensions, and improvements to the town's stormwater system. The issuance of revenue bonds to provide the cost thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of said works, the safeguarding of the interest of the owners of said revenue bonds, other matters connected therewith, and, and repealing ordinances, resolutions, or other instruments inconsistent herewith. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to suspend, suspend the rules to pass ordinance one, twenty twenty, a second time and for a second reading. An ordinance of the Olytic Town Council authorizing the construction of certain additions, extensions, and improvements to the town's stormwater system. The issuance of revenue bonds to provide the cost thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of said works, the safeguarding of the interest of the owners of said revenue bonds, other matters connected therewith, and repealing ordinances, resolutions, or other instruments inconsistent herewith. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All opposed, okay. So I'm making a motion to pass ordinance one, twenty twenty-two, for the final time.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So that motion is passed, okay. Motion for ordinance two, twenty twenty-two. An ordinance of the Olytic Town Council approving the issuance of stormwater district revenue bonds and the execution thereof. Do I have a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Making a motion to suspend the rules to pass ordinance two, twenty-two, a second time and for a second reading. An ordinance of the Olytic Town Council approving the issuance of stormwater district revenue bonds and the execution thereof. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to pass ordinance two, twenty, twenty-two, for the final time. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so that stance is passed. All right, moving on, do we have a police report?
Unfortunately, I don't, not tonight. It will be ready within the next couple of days. However, I do want to thank Jimmy Deckard for paying for the new striping on both the police cars. That was very gracious of him, he didn't have to do that. But as he stated whenever I spoke with him, and I believe whenever Mr. Dillon spoke with him, was he wants to see improvements in Olytic. He, you know, wants to invest in Olytic. And so very appreciative on, on our end, and I'll be sending out a letter to him, thanking him for that donation to, to get the cars restripped. New uniforms are almost ready. I spoke with Nelson and Company in Greencastle. I believe the new patches are gonna be sent out on February the fourth. And the new badge will be here sometime this week or next. And then also, I've got two deputies that have yet to receive paychecks, so.
That's on our agenda to discuss tonight.
So other than that, that's it. I, I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity and I look forward to continuing to try to, you know, improve.
And if you wouldn't mind, tell them you're going from a police department to marshal.
Everything, everything on our cars, our letterheads, our uniforms is no longer gonna say police, it is gonna say marshal. It's getting back to traditionalism, I, which is something that I'm a big fan of. And it, it's, it helps us stand out. One of the reasons is I want to be identifiable. So if there's multiple officers on scene and one of the Olytic officers does something, or a citizen feels that they have done something, then they can easily identify that officer. And they know who to come to with the complaint, and myself included. So it's just a part of easy identification and, you know, among other things that I've discussed with a, a couple of the board members as far as why I wanna go back to using the term marshal instead of police on our vehicles.
I'd like to add to that. We actually got a text from Brandman, your county sheriff. He absolutely loves the cars and reiterated the fact that he was glad to see us revert to the old marshal status, which is what we really are.
And that's, and, and all the feedback that I've got, you know, the, the way that the vehicles look, the way that the, the, you know, the new image of the, of the office is going, everybody that I've spoken with loves it. You know, and, and it's like the sheriff said, you know, he embraced the term sheriff's department and deputies because he's proud of being a, being the sheriff and, you know, proud of where he came from. I embrace the term marshal because I'm proud to be the marshal. I'm proud of our agency, I'm proud of our town. And, you know, I, I think that by not embracing what we truly are, then in a sense, that's not being proud of what we are. And I want to change that, I want to, to show a, a sense of pride in the agency, I wanna show a sense of pride in, you know, I want the officers to be proud of who they work for and who they represent.
Thank you. I do have to correct you, they won't be coming to you with complaints, they'll be coming with to you with compliments, so.
I appreciate it.
I'm complaining.
Let's hope so. But as, as we all know, we can't make everybody happy, but, you know, as, as I told one individual, whenever I messaged him, I'm open to dialogue, I've got an open door policy. If anybody sees me and they wanna speak about anything, they're more than welcome to flag me down or, you know, if they catch me in the office or whatever, then I'm always willing to speak with the citizens, that's who I work for.
You wanna put Zach next on this agenda?
Let me, let me give some of it, and if he wants to add to, he can.
Okay, I told him he could speak.
Okay.
Okay, the utilities, utilities report for tonight, we're going to let John go and then Zach.
Yeah, and then Zach can add to it. Wastewater treatment, since the last meeting, we actually didn't have a pump failure, but we noticed that one of the RAS pumps, the wet well pumps at the clarifiers, was not pumping or performing to match the other pump. There's two, one in each well. We actually pulled the pump and found that the impeller on the bottom of the pump was worn. And in one case, one side of the impeller was actually broken off. So it was still pumping and it was still pushing the solids that we needed it to push, just not to the degree that it should. We did have a backup, we installed the backup, it is up and running and knock on wood, has been with no problems. And right now, the amps and the percent of how it's operating is now equaling the other pump. So we're back in sync with what's happening there. We kind of have, and I say kind of have, a single point of failure now because we don't have a backup RAS pump. I have got quotes out asking for two things. Number one, a brand new pump. And number two, let's take the old pump and is it rebuildable? Can we put a new impeller on it and rebuild the bearings and the seals? And if so, then that's the route we'll go. Should we have a failure right now on, let's say, the older pump that was installed? The system was built and can handle all on one clarifier. So if I had to, we can shut down the, in this case, it'd be the south clarifier. The north clarifier could take the load and process what we're doing. Right now, we're pumping on an average over the last two weeks, somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-five to eighty thousand gallons a day. The plant is built for three million. So we're way under our capacity at this point, which is a good thing because then that tells us we've got plenty of room for growth. So that's what, on wastewater. The water update, and we'll let Zach kinda tag on to this. I know we've had two breaks that I'm aware of, I'm not aware of any others. We also have some quotes, or I know he was getting new quotes for the subject we talked about last month, on having to replace the entire water main on Ninth Street from eleventh...
Walnut.
Walnut Street, from Ninth to Eleventh. And that's still in pro, work in process. I know Zach was dealing with some estimates and had to get some different estimates based on costs. Zach?
And that whole situation there, all we ran into when we put in new meters, that's pretty much our old setting, the old part of town, I would say. And we broke it twice in there when we changed the meters out. And one guy advised me, there's already ran five clamps on that line down through there. Our rule of thumb is when it gets three clamps, we change it. Seems like after three clamps, you're spending more on clamps than actually just replacing the line. So that was what we got to finish up on that. But the quotes went up, of course, price of everything went up, so they only put ten days on the quotes I got. And due to the price change, we're gonna have to redo them all again. It's jumped up quite a bit in just ten days, so.
Your last quote was almost twenty grand, isn't it? Gonna be almost double that or at least ten grand more?
I say at least five or six more.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, and that's the way we're, but that's replacing twelve houses and putting two clutch hiders in through.
It's a lot of work, thirteen hundred feet, as I remember, thirteen, fourteen hundred feet.
And that's where we're at right now.
And that's the, that's all the utility updates I've got, unless Zach, you got anything else?
Yeah, I got a few. I guess I can sit back here, everyone don't have to stare me down. We got all the new meters in, all automatic re-meters in one month. The guy's got five hundred and some put in. There was a couple two-inch meters that we had to dig and replace. We went in into January, then they've all been installed. We, me and Carla's been working together, working the bugs out of it. But so far, it's light and everybody's loaded up. We was able to read meters in one day and fix two water leaks in one day. So it's cut us three days down to about twenty, thirty minutes. Now this system, which makes it nice, if people worried about it or something might be wrong, we get a report of the consumption. And when that consumption report comes out, it'll tell us if they have a high use, an intermediate leak, or something going on. We're able to go out, data log it, I can data log about ten minutes and it'll take it up to the day that the meter was installed, show you every day usage, I can even break it down, the time of when it was used. And I feel like this was a big, great moment of mine because it seems like a lot of people get their water bill and we can't really tell them what's going on. Now we have that ability to go out and service our public like it should be with utilities. We did have a couple breaks there, but the guys were able to pull it out real quick and break in a couple meters because it's so old and it's rusted up. But we've got them done, we've got a lot of projects coming this summer with water. We're looking at replacing another four or five hiders in town. I've got two sitting in the shop right now. And we're just waiting on a little bit warmer weather, is what I've got on that. Right now, I think we had just a couple, like I said, glitches in the new system, but I think we're getting them lined up real quick. And so if anybody has any problems now, they're more than welcome to call, come out, we'll data log it for them, check them what's going on, kind of narrow it down with the problems event. But that's all I've got on utilities.
Let me add one more thing. Sometime in February, and I'm waiting for calendar dates from Bynum Fanal, we will schedule a special meeting outside of the monthly meeting. And it'll simply be with our utility services contractor out of Bloomington. We'll make it for six or six-thirty, depending on the date for Jeff Farmer's calendar. I'd like for him to come in, I'd love to have the entire town present so they could ask questions. But it will be a question and answer, Jeff will explain what they do, how they do it. He will also give his perspective and view of the condition of the plant. He will also come prepared with some, I'll say, four or five items on a list, because it's a list not complete, of items he believes needs attention. And those items that need attention, he's gonna prioritize each one with a cost of saying, here's what ought to be replaced, here's when it ought to be replaced, and here's an approximate, approximate cost. And that'll be sometime mid to late February, again, I'm waiting on Jeff's calendar to free up and order to schedule that. So we'll put a notice out, we'll also put something on Facebook when we definitely have a date for that. Encourage everybody to show up, ask any and all questions, or if nothing else, just listen to Farmer and what he's got to say.
Anything else, Zach?
I've got all kinds of stuff, I get three minutes to talk around. Those guys are actually going to look into tomorrow, getting ready for the snowstorm. Supposedly, but this Indiana, we never know. But we wanna get everything prepped and ready to go tomorrow. We got some mechanic issues with the turbine, we've got a lot of them lined out. Last little bit of snow we got, we went out and saw the sand, we blew the hydraulic line. But the guys got the shop, we're gonna try to get some new filters on it and make sure it's prepped as best we can for what we got. And we should be able to have two, possibly three trucks ready to go, if I can get it all done tomorrow, in part of Wednesday. So I wanna make sure we get it, and I like to take the trucks over and get them loaded tomorrow with salt. And that way, when this stuff does happen, hopefully we can kind of pre-treat with that salt. We're looking at some options to do with that too, get that back at home if ever, when they don't do any work, we can't get any salt, so. Our hours work different with their hours, but we're talking, and the guys are deciding what we need to do to delete that. Probably have that get solved later tonight. Also, I am, been looking at, and I've been discussing it, I've been hauling on it, but I'm looking at hiring the fourth guy, Mike Collins. He's worked with us since the December. There's a lot of things, and I wrote some stuff down that he's brought that helped us out in that month that really changed everything from a street department. Hiring the fourth guy deletes having to find a part-time help on Thursdays when someone's out on vacation. As you guys know, usually it takes three guys on the truck, two at the minimum, one, you better be ready. I've been there a couple times. And so when there's a guy goes on vacation, we can actually let a guy have a full vacation where he don't have to come on Thursday. The worker can go back on vacation for the Friday, was one of the reasons. He has seventeen years of knowledge of the water. So with Wes and him, it brings us close to, let's put it down here, twenty-four years of knowledge of our water. So it better us the way we are, and knowing that part. His knowledge of fabrication and normal repairs is a benefit to help or leave a guy if needed. So if we have a guy out sick, just, he's able to step in, help us with that. So if we have a guy out sick, he's able to step in, help us with that issue, able to fabricate, because we deal a lot of fabrication work to keep our equipment around. So he's got that. With four guys, this gives time for me to help more in the office with Carla, working on these water bills and stuff, and getting our paperwork straightened out, try to get a better set down to where we can have better communication between all those. Instead of putting me in the field, it relieves me to where I can go to meetings, help out here. And his knowledge of installing the fire hydrants and other issues that we have going on at this time. Like I said, we got some fire hydrants this year. With his seventeen years of experience, he's able to put a lot of thought into what we're, where we're going to put them, what we need to put in, and also the project we got coming up on the water. He has his knowledge of getting his sewer license, and for the sewer plant, he's already took the test. And I'm looking at getting the guys that are licensed, two of them at minimum for the sewer plant. His knowledge around equipment, repairs of equipment, if someone quits, there's no training needed. We can fill him right back into that current position if someone does leave. And he has knowledge of reading blueprints and maps, and he's self-motivated individual. You really don't have to tell him anything. He pretty much works on what he knows that's wrong and has that general knowledge. But I want to bring that up tonight. I think there's some good ideas. Like I said, we was able to re-meters and fix our water leak in one day. And then granted, we put five hundred and some meters in one month with him being on board. There's a lot of good points out there that's going, you know, even in our ordinance book, it shows the position for him. So I know it's not the budget, but I think we need to look into this and do something about it. To do the help out a lot, I mean, three guys, we done it. I mean, Wes has done it for almost a year together, you know, part-time. But where we're at now, I feel like we're having more confidence about this summer of the projects that we're facing, having four men.
I was going to say, do we need some discussion on it? I, I would more than satisfied with what Mikey's done. I would even tell you, as a contest for installing meters, Mikey and Wes ran a contest on who could install how many and how quickly. Mikey actually outpaced Wes. He is a sharp individual, very sharp. So I, I'm here to entertain a motion, if somebody is willing to do so, to hire him. What's the, what's the fail?
It's a matter of the budget, though, right? Like to figure out the budget.
Money's in the bank. Budget can be adjusted.
Yeah, that has to, whether that works, we have to contact DLGF, which is Department Local Government Finance. We'd have to create an appropriation, go over the budget, pass an ordinance to hire him, do a resolution. So it's, there's several steps. So that's, I have in plans, hopefully if the weather holds out, to go down and meet with another clerk treasurer this week. Carla and I are going to go down there and work with another utilities clerk who, and clerk treasurer have been in, she's been in office for over twenty-seven years out of Dale, works with the same computer programs and everything that we do. So we're going to go down there and do some one-on-one and speak to them about how they do their appropriations and everything like that. So there is, there is a process to it. There is, there are steps that we have to go through.
Okay, so. Do we want to table it and hold a meeting like one, two, three weeks after Nick gets her information or?
I'm good with that, as long as we don't draw it out.
Yeah.
Yeah. We will consider that and we will have a public meeting in a couple of weeks and see if we can get her, as soon as she gets, gets it all worked out as how we go about that.
Well, I appreciate that. I mean, you know, it's relieving a lot of other shop and I feel like we get a lot better and a lot more accomplished than just trying to do it for you guys.
I know that you're on, I know the hours that you put in, so I, I know it's much needed. Personally, I believe that, so we'll, we'll work toward that. But, you know, there's things we have to do to, to prepare for it, so that's what we'll do, you know. They're also going to be helping put in the guttering.
That's, that's for the full time, or, yeah, full time, because you're still money in the budget to cover part-time and meantime?
Yes, yes, yeah, yes.
I've seen the guy work, he's a worker, he really is, and he knows his stuff.
The other couple things I have, and I'll try to make it short, the new camera system, that kind of tool has got me used on these drains. We've had it out a lot. We're starting to see stuff that we don't want to see. And stuff we know that is like, oh no. There's been storm drains that we went down and I don't even want to say what we seen. We're starting to look, investigate that, we're starting to draw them out. I've had a couple of guys out last week doing a few test runs with the new camera. We fixed three sewer problems with it, knowing exactly where it was and it wasn't on our side. So eliminated a lot on that. And I really appreciate the council for that, that's helped us all. And the new cable system that we bought last month for sixteen hundred, that system there is basically pull water lines under the ground, so we're not digging up someone's yard or their driveway now. So with that sixteen hundred spent, we used it on the two water leaks that day.
I actually saw evidence of what happens when it rams in there to push the old pipe out and pull the new in.
So we'll be able to save us costs on tearing up driveways now and start fixing it the right way. It's been a very beneficial tool because I say that putting time together, it takes about two hours, that machine and that cable puller, it took us about thirty minutes to get a new line in after we found it. So it's been a very beneficial tool. The tap machine we got recently, we used to borrow Befferts all the time and do our own water taps. That tool has came in handy more and more here lately when we get, we've had three taps on top of the hill. When I'm near by the top of the hill, it's up by the Beffert Auto Clinic and all of it. We was able to use it on any jobs up there and we're real thankful to have our own because me and Wes always thought if we break the Befferts, then we're going to pay for Befferts and then buy our own when we have to have what we need. So we was able to buy our own, had a good reprisal on it, too.
Brenda.
And I appreciate that.
You remember when I told you about the iridescent looking ground in the alley between my house and the one behind me?
Yes.
Would the camera work for that? Something's going on, there's white off of white.
I would say it was.
Yeah.
In the sun out.
We're doing a test, good.
And in the morning, that ground looks iridescent, it's eerie.
Yes.
And we can actually be able to find them areas for individuals now, and that's kind of opened the door for everything. And I feel like, you know, we're going in the right direction and we're really changing things now. We're, we're able to do our own water and we're doing it quicker and more efficient than we was. And I appreciate that.
Thank you.
But I appreciate you guys and, like I said, individuals or any people in town, they're more than welcome. If they have a water issue or a problem, they're more than welcome to call me. We'll get it investigated and see what's at stake. A lot of these issues been going on, you know, two, three years previously. When I walked in, we was able to accomplish a lot of them in the beginning, but we're still got a lot to go. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was proud and blessed to have you on board. You sure are, really are.
Well, it's like I say, this town became my family. And I've been here for people lost, loved, on fire department stuff, so I drove us really close to a lot of these people in town. And my poor heart's in it. And I'm not going to do anything to judge that or upset anyone, but if anyone has any problems, they're more than welcome to give a reach out. They see something different or something wrong or, or doing something weird, more than welcome to call me. Because sometimes I look at a lot of our problems and you're going, why are they doing this it this way? Well, what the guys and all of us discuss before we go out and do a problem in town, we all get together, come up with the best solution for the issues. I think Dan's seen that. We did that in the backyard, we really, when we found the problem, we knocked it out.
I want to have thumbs up.
I'll take it, that's my grandson.
So I thank you guys. I'd like to say anything. But thank you.
All right, I guess Brenda is, that's me. In 2021, we appointed Steve Kerr to sit as a member of the Southern Indiana Development Commission. And I want, I'm going to make a motion to the board that we retain him for 2022 to sit on that board. He, he's done a great job this year, going to the meetings that they have and following up. So I would like to make a motion to retain Steve Kerr as a member of the Southern Indiana Development Development Commission for the calendar year 2022.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All abstained.
I'm sure you have it in your hands.
Do you say yes or no?
Well, see, I can't really vote, so.
You obtained.
You obtained from voting.
That was a volatile, you obtained.
Well, from voting, yeah, abstaining from voting, not.
I didn't hear you say you wanted it.
It doesn't work that way. It doesn't work that way, believe me.
It sounds glamorous.
Yeah. We had a call from a resident at Tenth and Eric, let's see, south end of Tenth, Tenth Street and Eric Avenue in the manor. And there, we have two yield signs there. And Tenth, you know, most of you know is a dead end, goes into a dead end, but there's two yield signs on Eric. And the residents have two autistic children. And they're very concerned about the traffic, how fast they come through there. They're asking the board to consider stop signs or consider putting up signs, let's say, children present, maybe on both sides. So I'm bringing it to the board.
I think we need to eliminate pretty much all the yield signs. There's a lot of areas with yield. And there's a lot of intersections that have a yield sign and the traffic can grow awfully. If you benefit, we'll look at getting stop signs put in there.
When, when this, when this was brought to my attention, I believe this is not the first time this has been brought up for these people. I, I believe I've heard it maybe even before I, before I came on board. There was conversation about their concerns because of their children being autistic in that area, so.
Can they, he was talking about signs, can they sort of like special needs and non-lying for deaf kids say what have?
I talked to her about that. The concern there is if you draw more attention to special needs, it can sometimes draw out people who have ill intentions towards those children.
Yeah, they don't want to.
Knowing that they might not recognize someone as a danger. So after speaking with her thoroughly about it, she was, she, you know, requested not to necessarily go that route just for the safety of them because they're not children who can recognize.
She, she wants.
Versus a stranger, I shouldn't talk to you of their approach.
Okay.
She wants either stop signs or children present, caution children present. But I'm asking you guys, if, if you want to go look and then we'll, you know, we'll discuss it at another board meeting or, you know, since you just.
I know the area personally, I'm, I'm familiar with the area. I, I say we do both. I say we remove the stop or remove the yield signs, put up stop signs, and also put up caution children play. We have, Zach, I know we've got at least one of those big rectangular children signs, right?
Yeah, for the school.
And so we can, we can do that?
Yeah.
I'm into that.
So.
Do we have stop signs now or do they still?
No, they're, they're yield signs.
But you want to put up stop signs, you said, do we have those already?
We'll have, we'll have to order some.
Yeah. Okay, because we still haven't got one other one on Vista yet.
Right.
Our stop signs are on back order right now. And with economy, I guess you could say, we're having a hard chance of getting anything in right now. Where it's a fight tooth and nail, things have become gold, is what's been easy to get ahold of from last year.
Yeah. Appropriate, no?
So you're saying you're going to stop signs?
But they're on back order.
I would say.
Yeah.
Both?
I would.
Appropriate, yeah.
Okay, I make a motion that we, at Tenth and Eric Avenue there, Tenth Street and Eric Avenue, we put both stop signs and caution children present in that area. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so Lou will take care of that, Zach will do that.
Hold on just a minute, before we go any further, Greg. Because this is a change in traffic policy, we'd need to update the ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so we need to, along with the motion, get the signs, but then we'll all dig out the ordinance that we need to update. That.
Change it before.
Yeah, that changes, it says we'll remove the yields at the intersection, we'll place stops at the intersection, and then place children at play.
Right.
As well. We'll bring that to next month's meeting and pass it at next month's meeting, if that's all right, everybody?
What do you expect to gain with a stop sign? Now, I don't, you guys worked on that Vista and Rattle over there. Saturday, I watched one car stop all day. Sunday, I saw two. And I know Saturday morning was bad.
But Dan, what other alternative is there?
Well, you just listen to me for a second. I know we, we've had this discussion on and on over the years here about speeders over there and they put these stop signs. Is a stop sign an ordinance or is there law?
Both.
Every stop sign you come to, you stop, isn't that correct?
Correct. So if.
Nobody stops, they slow down. That's, that's healthy, but they don't stop.
Okay. If I observe somebody disregard a stop sign, then I, I can issue a citation to that individual.
I would say, I would say, warn it.
Why warn it? If you're, if you're concerned about the stop signs so much, why warn it?
Because there's so many of them, and it's all people that live in the neighborhood.
Okay, but people that live in the neighborhood, so listen to my argument, okay? There's already been a death because people disregard the speed limits and, and stop signs. And I, what I'm, what I'm fixing to say is probably going to be unpopular. I don't want people in Olliddic who are going to disregard our speed limits and our, and our signage and commit crimes. Those are lots of people I want in Olliddic. The people that live in the area that know that those stop signs and signage are present should be the ones that know more than anybody the dangers as to, and, you know, that traffic present and why those signs are present. So if you're coming and complaining about people speeding and running stop signs or whatnot, and then you're asking me, well, just give them a warning, what good is it going to do? Because I, I don't like giving citations, I hate giving citations unless it's warranted. But if I catch somebody continuously doing the same thing over and over again, they're going to get a citation.
Good, my, okay, now, can I say something?
Yes, absolutely.
The former town marshal, I talked to him several times.
I'm not the former town marshal.
I, just tell me what he, I said to him, John, park your car on Meadow Lane up behind, up the other side of Delvis. I said, you got, you got a radar gun and you got them coming both ways. Well, he says he'll see me. I said, God, that's a great idea.
I agree with you.
And I, the last time I saw him, he parked down in front of her house. That's where his car was at.
Yeah.
Well, you can't see the stop sign from down there.
And I'm open to dialogue, as I stated earlier. If anybody wants to come in and talk to me and give me suggestions and us work together on how we can better, you know, anything within the town, whether it's enforcing traffic ordinances, whether it's enforcing, you know, IC codes that pertain to criminal activity or whatever, I'm open to that dialogue. We as a community have to work together. But whenever there are complaints, saving those complaints to come to the town board and inundate the town, to come, saving those complaints, come into a town council meeting and then inundating the council with those complaints is doing nothing. If you are taking care of those complaints as they happen, we have better chance of taking care of the issue at hand as opposed to waiting a month or so. Because if I don't hear the complaints, there's nothing I can do about it unless I see them doing it. But if you're telling me that there's people that are continuously running that stop sign, then I know to do extra patrols in that area, which we can do.
I would, I would really love to see the police car over.
We're always in rolling acres, we're all over the place. My activity reports, if you look at my activity reports, then my activity reports shows an increase in traffic in, in verbal warnings issued, an increase in citations issued, an increase in traffic stops, an increase in proactivity. I want this town to be safe. That's my, that is what I am tasked with doing, is making sure that this town is safe.
I'd like to see that air section safe, like I'm saying. I'd like to see that intersection safe, but like I'm saying, we painted in the kitchen this weekend. And so we were looking outside at that intersection and all day long, it just rolled through.
So, so can you do me a favor? Can we hold this discussion until after the meeting, that way they can continue the meeting and then we can talk about it in my office?
Cause I don't feel like I should have to, like you say, bring it up in front of the town, I brought it up in front of the town for you.
I, I will give you my cell phone number and then that way you can contact me via my cell. Anytime that you wish.
I'm, I'm, uh, further.
We need to, can we come back to this here in a second?
Don't move on, okay?
Cause we've jumped off a little bit, thank you, thank you both, thanks James.
Thank you.
End up.
Okay, um. Lost, lost where I'm at now. We had another resident that called Zach and I don't know if this falls into the town jurisdiction or not. But there's a tree by the school property that's, who took that call?
I did, yeah.
She said there's a tree by the school property that is falling over and it's falling over onto her property. So is that something that?
Well, it's not on, not on her property, it's over the, it's over the highway, so it's in the area next to the school. So as you're, as you're leaving Olytic and going O thirty-seven, Hoosier, on the right-hand side where they removed all of those trees, there's still another one there that's hanging over the roadway or leaning over the roadway that she thought.
That's not the school's property.
No. She was saying it was near the school.
Oh, near.
But she, she has it.
We own twenty feet of the right way down through there on the side.
Okay.
I did get a quote, I liked your clear code.
So you're aware of it?
Yeah, I, well, I'm not aware of her problem, but I knew something I knew about and something I've been looking at. I'm not sure what the last quote come in at.
Ninety-eight hundred dollars.
How much?
Ninety-eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, so we're going to look at it, we might be just to the point that us boys will shut down the road and do it ourselves. Um, and we've done that before down there at Easies, where we dropped a few trees down there that was hanging in the roadway. Um, so yeah, it's on the thing, but yeah, we're looking into it.
Okay.
I gotta go.
Okay, and, uh, James, this, this is probably for you. Um, on Fifth Street, we put off-street parking. The cars have not moved, they've not moved, they're still parking there on the street.
Okay.
So we need to follow up, they'll know that, you know, they had ample notice that this was going to happen.
Now, I'm going to come in and, uh, I know Mr. Broglan and I, we've been discussing, uh, several issues in town pertaining to, uh, overgrowth and, uh, abandoned vehicles and, and whatnot, so, uh, I'm going to come in, uh, throughout the day, uh, you know, a, a few weeks here and there and, uh, we're going to focus on getting it cleaned up.
Okay.
So.
Okay, and, uh, concerning the pay for the part-time marshals. Uh, we have the same issue that we have with, uh, hiring another person, the fourth person for Zach. Because we, when we was appropriated, it was appropriated for marshal and then another full-time deputy. And we haven't appropriated any funding for two part-time, so we need to take care of that as well.
Right, and going on with that, um, we really need, we really need a schedule. Um, there's multiple phone calls where Carla and I cannot let somebody know when their schedule is. So going on with the part-time, we really need to know how many days a week that they are going to be working to offset what they're going to be paying and discuss their pay scale. None of that has been brought to my attention.
As far as the schedule goes, the, the reason that I have not given a schedule is working a staggered shift. It doesn't let people know when the dog's out, it doesn't let people know when I'm out. And if there's an issue, if somebody calls, take a phone number, take a name, forward it, if you want, give them my department's cell phone. But as, as far as the schedule goes, then the, it's my understanding they want me on a staggered schedule. Uh, it's been productive, me being on a sta- on a staggered schedule. Uh, I've explained that to you already and Mr. Broglan's explained that. Uh, as far as the deputies, I will get a time when they, when they are going to be able to work and I will get that to you.
Okay, cause I need, cause I need to know approximately how many hours they're going to work to offset and decide what we're going to pay them.
Right, and it, it should be, they, they even, you know, they should be paid the same. I mean, Greg, Greg Jenkins, the chief deputy, Mike Vargo's a deputy. And, uh, so it should, you know, that, that pay should be split down the middle like what Mr. Broglan and I have discussed. And like what I discussed with you last.
But I can't, but I can't, but I can't do that, I can't just take that pay and cut that pay in half and say, here you go, guys. It has to be voted on, there has to be an ordinance passed, it has to be appropriated for.
You listened to this, Greg? What do you think we need to do?
I think we need to talk about, maybe outside the meeting, come up with a solution directly back to the board.
Can we, so we can't get the guys paid until we?
We.
Oh, yeah. Can we go ahead and pay them and get them caught up?
Yeah, because I, I can't in due faith ask my guys to work if they're not going to get paid.
Wrong. So can you give them, can you get them paid and that, to get them caught up?
Well, I can, but.
That's what I meant.
Then, then again, there wasn't, that's what I'm saying.
Right, and we're going to correct that.
I'm going to correct that.
Right.
We're going to correct what you said.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so can you go ahead and get them paid?
I can work on that tomorrow because it's not like I can just go in there and just.
I understand, I sure, I appreciate it, yeah, I appreciate it, all right. Let us know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I have another, uh, letter that I should have read to begin with, um. This says, "To the residents of Olytic from the Olytic Town Council. The board would like to take the opportunity to issue a formal apology for the mixed-up sixty-day charging on water bills. Converting to the new radio meters was and is the correct call for the future. The board had no idea that January's billing would catch up billing for the two months in arrears, a practice that the town has been doing for years. If anyone is struggling with the January bill, please reach out to Carla, she will make payment arrangements with all the late charge and all the late charges will be waived. Thanks, Olytic Town Council, Angie Jenkins, Brenda Corey, John Dillon, Steve Kerr, and John Broglan." Okay, I think that's all I have. I lost mine. Okay, John Dillon, do you have anything?
I have one thing, um, this building right next to us, it's a fire station. Uh, Joan and I went through it a few weeks ago and it's, it's almost like the North High School, the roof's gone. Uh, probably in the next, anytime we could, we're supposed to have bird life in it, animals, and it's just going to keep falling. So that needs to be put on a priority list to get a roof on that thing. Uh, the building's sound, it's just, it needs a roof and rafters in repair, uh, to save it or it's, it's just going to get like the school. So if we could get that on priority, can we start taking bids on that and?
It's what we need to do. Based on dollar amount, we, we ought to farm it out and ask for at least two and probably ought to have three bids.
Yeah.
Just for sake.
What's the estimated cost?
My, my gut, between eighty and a hundred thousand.
Yeah, you're required to get three quotes and there's certain, you have to send a, a notice to the, um, who you're soliciting quotes from. And, uh, it's got to be in certified, uncertified mail-in and we have to get those back in seven days prior, sealed quotes in prior to, uh, opening the quotes. So it's a more formal process because of the next, the cost.
I thought that cost ceiling is a hundred and fifty thousand.
Anything over a hundred and fifty, you have to do a formal bid process, where you actually advertise, notice to all bidders, but under a hundred, you can do quotes.
Okay.
But it's still a little more formal than under fifty where you can just solicit three quotes presented in one alone and you have to send certified mailings and get it back in seven days prior.
Didn't you already do that last year? No, nothing formal. We, we did get a verbal quote and one in writing, I'm still waiting on another one outstanding, I haven't had a third one, we'll find somebody. Well, I guess I don't know, well, Mayor, they already discussed it. Well.
When you're ready to do it, we'll sit down and make sure we.
Do it, okay, yeah. Previous boards had gone out and got estimates, but I don't know whatever happened to those and nobody reacted to them.
Right.
Do you, uh, need to make a motion to get those bids?
Yeah. No.
I don't think you really have to have anything until, well, yeah, you probably should because there's going to be a, um, we're going to have some costs in the mailings and everything, so I would have a motion.
Okay, so I made the motion to get three quotes for the old fire station repairs. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so.
You want to have those, uh, deadline next month meeting?
Yeah.
I think sooner than later, right?
That's the next meeting, right?
Right.
Yeah. Cause it could be a nice building once it's, uh.
Repair. Are you looking at February? Uh, looks like twenty-eight?
Yeah, it's the last of the month. Last every month.
You know anything else, John?
I'm done.
Okay, um, Steve, do you have anything?
Just a couple things and I was going to add Zach, but he's not here, but maybe somebody here may know. Do you know if he has completed, I know some of the lids had to be changed. Um, you know, they wouldn't accept the regular lid, talking about the new water meters. Does anyone know, did we get the things they needed to put on the caps?
I don't think so.
Yes.
Okay.
Somebody else that could.
And Annette's brother actually helped accommodate and meet some of that by physically cutting holes in some of the old past iron lids.
Oh, terrific.
Yeah.
In fact, because I'm thinking mine was one of those, but I didn't think, then I had to go take a look, see if that was done on mine or if it is.
Yeah, I, I don't know if they still have anything outstanding to switch them on.
I don't know if they're working or not.
Terrific. Couple other things, the, uh, just, you know, I think about the water, water bills. And it's just for public's knowledge, I'm thinking this is probably what you call an unintended consequence. They just made the system so efficient at that point, instead of having, you know, whatever, a thirty-day additional lag time. Or the numbers can be broadened instantly, so, you know, I don't think it's, there was a confidence issue, it's just, it's kind of the opposite. We're now moved up, um, at warp speed. Um, and then the last thing is just, uh, mentioned Brenda and I are working on easements and, uh, difference in egresses from the previous ones we did last summer for the water project, those are coming really well. Um, but that was really the only thing, because there were, based on some changes that commonwealth determined when they've done their inspections of the area, some things they said, well, we need to tweak this here and there and that's what those are for. So, but that's working, moving along great, but that's really it, no new business from me.
John? You have a little more to add?
Yeah, I have a, um, ordinance change update. Uh, I put a motion on the floor for ordinance number three of twenty twenty-two. Um, this is a change to Title Three, the Administration, Section, Chapter Thirty-One, Legislative Branch, Section Thirty-One Point Two Seven. And it's basically an ordinance that dictates what this meeting is and when it happens. As I was going through ordinances and reading and familiarizing myself with them, I found out that the present ordinance stated our meeting should be on the fourth Monday of the month, not the last Monday of the month. Well, as long as I can remember and you can remember, it's always been the last Monday of the month. So in discussions with Greg, I decided to bring this ordinance forward that basically states that regular meetings of the Olytic Town Council shall be held at the Olytic Town Hall on the last Monday of every month, except where the last Monday of the month is a recognized holiday, in which case the meeting will be called for on the Monday of the week prior to the holiday. And when Greg and I looked at it, and I think Brendan and Steve were here too, the only exception we had to that this year is Memorial Day, which is the last Monday of May, so we would actually have it the week prior, on the Monday prior to Memorial Day. But there are, I didn't bring my notes, there are, I think, three or four months now, I think off the top of my head, that have five Mondays in them, right? So again, it would be the last Monday and that's typically what we've done. Uh, so it's, uh, let's see, meeting would be called on the Monday of the week prior to the holiday. The meeting will occur at six-thirty P M. at the local time zone of the town of Olytic or in reasonable hour of the day or evening. It has been previously agreed upon by the majority of the council with prompt notice given to the clerk treasurer, provided that in all cases where a special meeting is called, a written notice shall be given to the town council clerk treasurer and the public pursuant to the Indiana Code at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. So I put that motion on the floor to update that portion of the ordinance and it's ordinance three of twenty twenty-two.